Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and call to order the Planning Commission for Sacramento County on January 9th, 2023. Will you please go ahead and call the roll?
Good evening, members. Borja?
Present.
Raytho?
Here.
Totishi?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
And do we have Commissioner Corona Sabaniano online yet?
I do not see—
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you. And you have a quorum. Commissioner Wong, I have not received any notice from her, so I don't know that she's going to be here, so.
Sounds good. Thank you. If you go ahead and proceed with the announcements?
Yes. The county fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The county does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. In compliance with directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the meeting is open to public attendance pursuant to health and safety guidelines. The practice of social distancing and wearing a face covering mask or shield is recommended for the health and safety of all persons participating in person during the meeting, although it is not required. To make a public comment, please complete a speaker request form and hand it to the clerk. The chairperson will call your name when it is your turn to make a comment. To make a telephonic public comment at today's meeting, dial 916-875-2501, and follow the prompts, and leave a message. Clerk staff will return your call and transfer you into the meeting when it is your turn to give your comment. You may also send a written comment to boardclerk@zackcounty.gov, and your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record. And that concludes my public comments.
Thank you so much.
Or my announcement, sorry.
No problem. Thank you all. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So as I'm sure you've noticed, we are doing a bit of a hybrid meeting tonight. I know a number of folks were impacted by the crazy storms over the last few days, so bear with us as we run this meeting in the hybrid format. So we have a quorum. We're going to start off this evening as the Board of Zoning Appeals, and if you'll go ahead and call item number one.
Yes, and I will need to take and give an oath for this item. So, acting as the Board of Zoning Appeals, appeal of the Planning Director's determination. This item was continued from December 12, 2022. Item number three, it's located at 7870 and 7890 Florin Road, approximately 500 feet west of the Florin Road and Power Inn Road intersection in the South Sacramento community. There is no environmental document that is applicable. So if you plan to testify in front of the Planning Commission, I will need you to stand for this item, and I need you to stand and swear and give you the oath.
We're having a little procedural discussion.
Oh.
So he would like to continue—
Can you put the microphones both toward your mouth? Yeah.
He'd like to continue the item.
Because the—sorry. The appellant, Gordon Egan, would like to continue the item to the next agenda. Is this because there's only four members of the board?
There are only four members of the board here, so a tie would affirm the decision of the zoning administrator. And so if we had five members, it would take—a tie would not. So I would like—in the—a lot of this is going to be about due process, so I'd like to get a little more process with a full board.
I think the only other thing to note is that Commissioner Sabaniano may show up. There's also the option to perhaps—
She's online.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So there are four members.
Commissioner Wong—I'm sorry. I meant Commissioner Wong. You could also take a couple of items and see where we're at after that.
Right. And see.
I prefer not to do that, but that's their call.
Yeah, I'd rather not make everyone come back out for another meeting and renotice and everything. So let's—can you check in with Commissioner Wong?
Well, there she is.
There we go. Just give us a good 45 seconds, and we'll be ready. Are you comfortable proceeding? That was perfect timing.
I tried.
All right. So we'll go ahead and proceed with the staff presentation for item number one this evening. Oh, are we going with swearing in?
I can do it afterwards. It's fine. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Good evening. My name is Lauren Haas. I'm an Associate Planner with Planning and Environmental Review. On June 23rd, 2022, our division received a request for a determination on the conforming status of an existing freestanding sign located in the parking lot of a commercial shopping center located at the intersection of Florin Road and Power Inn Road in the South Sacramento community. Per issued a determination on October 3rd, 2022, deeming the sign conforming to current zoning code requirements. This determination was appealed on October 13th, 2022, and today you are acting as the Board of Zoning Appeals to hear this appeal. The shopping center consists of three parcels, as shown in the slide. The two eastern parcels, consisting of APNs 018 and 020, and named the South Point Center, total 5.61 acres in size, and are owned by a single property owner. The parcel to the west, APN 019, is 2.64 acres in size and is owned by a different property owner. The subject request for a determination was made by a representative of the property owner of APN 019, and the appeal of the determination was made by a representative of the property owner for APN 018 and 020. The subject sign is called out by an arrow on the slide, and a street view perspective of the sign has also been included. Please note that the aerial maps and the parcel line dimensions are accurate, but they don't always line up perfectly when they're overlaying, so we can't use the location of the sign in the aerial imagery in relation to the parcel lines to determine what parcel the sign is located on. Per makes no claim in the determination letter, the appeal report, or in the presentation today as to who owns the sign. I would also like to note that the applicant has informed us that there is a private dispute between the property owners over advertising rights on the sign. I believe both property owners acknowledge who has ownership over the sign, but Per has not received a copy of a land survey, so we cannot confirm at this point who has ownership. I'll get into this more a little bit later, but ownership over that sign does not impact the determination that the sign is conforming. So the sign has been deemed conforming with both the zoning code standards in effect at the time that the sign was believed to have been originally built, as well as with current standards. During the research and analysis for this determination, Per staff reviewed the historic aerial imagery, which is provided on the slide. Assessor's information and the historic imagery suggests that the property was originally developed in 1965, when the property was zoned light commercial, which was abbreviated as C1 at the time. As you can see, 1968 imagery appears to indicate that the subject sign was constructed in conjunction with the development of APN 019 and the parking areas of APN 018, and nothing was constructed on APN 020 at the time. So at this time in 1968, the sign—assuming it was as it is today—met all of the sign development standards in the code that applied at that time. That analysis is provided in Table A of the staff report for this appeal. During this analysis, it became apparent that the square footage allowance for the sign was most likely calculated based on the frontage of the building for APN 019, because there was no building on APN 018 at the time. Table 1 of the determination letter presents an analysis of the subject sign's consistency with applicable development standards in the current zoning code. As concluded, the sign is consistent with maximum area, the minimum setback requirement, the maximum height, spacing requirements from other freestanding signs, and illumination requirements for signs in commercial zones. Currently, freestanding sign area calculations are based on public street frontage length instead of building frontage length. The original determination that Per conducted utilized the public street frontage associated with APN 019, as the subject sign was erected at the time that APN 019's commercial building and site improvements were erected. However, as discussed in the Appeal Staff Report, regardless of which set of parcels is used for this calculation, either APN 019 or the two parcels that make up the South Point Center, APN 018 and 020, the sign can be deemed conforming. This discussion of the subject sign's conformance with applicable zoning code development standards summarizes the extent of the determination letter. The notice of appeal included a number of other reasons for petition which are unrelated to the determination and which are not within the purview of Planning and Environmental Review. The full notice of appeal is provided as Attachment 3 to the staff report—the Appeal Staff Report. And so questions that are regarding items in the appeal that are not—that are outside of Per's purview will be deferred to either the appellant or a county council. And lastly, Planning and Environmental Review staff recommends that the Board of Zoning Appeals denies the appeal and maintains Per's determination that the sign is in conformance with zoning code development standards. So please feel free to direct any questions about the determination on the conforming status of the sign to me, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Haas. Questions for staff this evening? All right. Any questions from the Zoom crew?
I do not see anyone with their hand—
No questions.
Hand raised.
All right. With that, we'll go ahead and move to the appellant's presentation? And did you want to swear everyone in at once?
That would be nice. If there's anyone else who is going to testify, just do it one time.
Let's have the appellant applicant. Anyone involved with the project that's going to speak tonight?
For item number one.
Okay. If you wish to address the board about items on the agenda, please stand and be sworn. Please raise your right hand, and the appropriate response is "I do." Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give, this commission, is the truth, so help you, God? If you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Thank you. When you come to the podium to speak, please say—you state your name, and then say you have been sworn.
Gordon Egan, I represent the appellant. So as the Planning Department has stated, we have a lot of disagreements with the determination. We think the facts are wrong. We think the process is wrong, and we think they get the law wrong. So let's just go through all of those. This letter was issued without notice. We received no notice whatsoever. We're in the middle of litigation with the neighboring property owner. That has—it's fairly extensive. But the neighboring property owner sued my client claiming an easement to use the sign. I have a copy of that. I'd like to enter in the record here. I can give you five. Nowhere in the opinion is the fact that use and ownership of the sign is a subject of litigation. Nowhere in the opinion letter does it state that the neighboring property owner was notified. Yet the letter purports to adjudicate planning and entitlement rights on a piece of property without identifying the owner. You know, it's as if I went and filed one of these on the county council's house, saying that I had the right to construct a multi-story apartment complex there, and the county gave it to me, and no one told him. That's just flat wrong. It violates due process. It violates my client's right to notice. And if the county council would like some cases, I'll be happy to hand them over. But it's basic due process that when rights are being adjudicated, the others—the person whose rights—in this case, my client, the owner of 18 and 20, APNs 18 and 20, should have received notice. Okay. Second, we should have been allowed to make some kind of input as to this. This is already—this is in court. The dispute is being heard by the Sacramento County Superior Court. They haven't made a decision yet. That's probably a year off. And ownership or you use rights to the sign are elements of the court's ultimate decision. If you see by the complaint, one of the things that the plaintiff is asking for is an equitable easement. Ownership or rights to the sign play into the equitable easement. So does their exclusive easement argument. So what's happening here is the Planning Department and the planning infrastructure of Sacramento County is sticking its toe into a piece of litigation without acknowledging it or even understanding what it's about. Third, or the— the facts are wrong. So let's go through that. The owner of 19 used the sign from—several owners of 19 used the sign from 1965 about through night—to October 2020. From October 2020 to approximately October 2022, my client used the sign. For a period of two years, the owner of 19 did not use the sign. That's never reflected in the letter. Okay? Also, it's unclear from those photographs whether anybody knew—well, let me say this. The owners of all the property agree that the sign is located on parcel 18. Nobody thinks that it's located on parcel 19. That's pretty much stipulated between the parties. The problem is that it's unclear whether that analysis in the staff report is correct. Clearly, the analysis for today is that that sign would be an illegal billboard. It's just flat out plain and simple. It's an off-premises sign. And off-premises signs are just essentially flat out not allowed, and it doesn't come in under any of the exceptions. The problem is, is the Planning Department treats this as one shopping center. It's never been one shopping center. If it was one shopping center, they might have some basis for that. But under the Sacramento County zoning code, there is no basis for this sign. It's a freestanding sign. It—and as a freestanding sign, it is—not allowed—excuse me. It's a billboard sign. As a billboard sign, because it's not located on the property it is part of, it is against the rules. If they—if their property was too small or too strangely configured to have a sign, then it might be allowed. If the property had some other basis, then it might be allowed. But under current rules, it's not allowed. And that interruption in use produces a new use here, and it's not allowed. Back to my note there. So our position is pretty simple. The—the property—there's three properties involved here. This sign is on my client's property. It does not conform to the zoning code. We never received notice. We've never had an opportunity to make our position, except now. And the letter should be overturned. The decision should be overturned. Plus the fact that it's in litigation, and you should not interfere with the litigation that's occurring. Also, I'd like to point out a couple things. SAC County has treated this property—this sign as if it belonged to my client. SAC County has issued building permits to my client's tenants for the work on this sign. SAC County issued a notice of violation to my client on this sign, as—if it's his sign, my client's sign. And if you want copies, I have copies of those notices of violation. So while Planning's issued an opinion, building has said, "It's my client's sign." And in one sense, I realize that those two don't go along with each other. But the fact is, your other hand out here is saying that it's my client's sign. So I'll end on that, and we'll let some others speak. Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll move on to the applicant's rebuttal.
Hi, my name is Matthew Richard, and I'm here on behalf of the applicants. As we've already heard, this matter is already a matter that's under consideration by the Sacramento County Superior Courts, and I believe a copy of that complaint has been provided by Mr. Egan before me. However, that litigation has no relationship to this determination. As the county has already stated, this is not a determination about ownership. This is only a determination about whether the sign is permitted to stand, as is, under the zoning code. Whether my client owns the sign or whether Mr. Egan's client owns the sign will be the ultimate determination of the Sacramento County Superior Courts, but it is not affected by any determination by the county. At the end of the day, all that my client was seeking, and all that we were seeking, was an understanding from the county as to whether any code enforcement would occur if they were to use the sign pursuant to a court order. The court has already ordered my client to have interim possession of the sign and preliminary adjudicated the rights to ownership. While this is pending a final adjudication, my client intends to use the sign and has been threatened with complaints filed to the county and was fearful that a county enforcement action would come against them. That's the background to this application as to why this determination was sought, and we view this determination as simply going towards that, that the county has determined that this is a zoning compliance sign, and enforcement action will not be brought as long as it remains as is, subject to, obviously, the building code and everything else that would come with ownership of the sign. As far as notice goes, it is not our belief that any notice to the other side was required in this, as it is not determining any rights to property. It is merely a determination of whether enforcement will be brought. So therefore, we don't believe that any type of due process is violated in making this determination, as the determination does not go towards any right to ownership or use of the sign. Lastly, the appellant has indicated that the zoning determination is Lastly, the appellant has indicated that the zoning determination is wrong. We obviously will contend that it is correct. There are several different code provisions that would permit you to reach that same result. However, most importantly, we're talking about a sign that was constructed in or around 1967. And the zoning code in, in effect during that time would govern. And also, the Business and Professions Code provides that notwithstanding any other provision, no advertising display which was lawfully erected anywhere within the state shall be compelled to be removed, nor shall its customary maintenance or use be limited, whether or not the removal or limitation is pursuant to or because of this chapter, any other law, ordinance, or regulation. The California Legislature has already spoken on to this direct issue. And as long as the sign was conforming at the time in which it was constructed, it is a valid determination by the county that my clients will not be, will not be subject to enforcement action for their use. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move back to the appellant. If you would like to rebut anything the applicant had to say, you're welcome at this time.
Two things. It's not clear that an off-premises sign was permitted under the 1967 code. I'd walk you through Exhibit A, but I don't have a copy in front of me. That, what is clear is that at the time, the sign was, was constructed in 1965. By the way, no one can find building permits or anything else for the sign. She's smiling over there because we've both looked. And so we're not exactly sure when it was built. But if we're saying 1965 to 1967, it's an off-premises sign. And it's not clear that the code allowed you to build an off-premises sign at the time. That's number one. Number two, the, the fact is, is that they have not had continuous use. They've had more than 18 months, almost two years, a period of time when they were not using that sign. And they didn't file their lawsuit until more than a year after they stopped using the sign. Or the, so saying that, that they're allowed to use it because they're grandfathered in doesn't make sense because they weren't there. They weren't using it factually. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. Do we have any questions this evening from the commissioners for the appellant? Any questions for the applicant? All right. With that, we're going to go ahead and move on to public comment.
I'm just checking now and we do not have any public comments.
Perfect. Do we have any public comments in the room on this item? All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period. And we will move on to deliberation. Anyone want to kick us off this evening?
Just to, and maybe staff can clarify. So when this came in, it's really just a determination as to whether or not this would be still conforming or not. There is no issue here. There's no statement or even alluding to the idea of ownership or use of this sign. Is that correct?
Wendy Hartman, Office of Planning and Environmental Review. That is correct. We often issue these letters as similar to a Public Records Act type of request. Folks get information from the Planning Department regarding what's existing on sites and whether it's conforming or not on a regular basis.
So hypothetically, a concerned neighbor, half a mile down drives by and is like, I don't think that sign's supposed to be there based on code, can submit a request similar to this and get a determination from the county?
Correct.
And there's no obligation at that point to actually notify the person who, whether they own it or is located on their property, that somebody made that request?
Correct. We treat it very much like a Public Records Act request.
Okay.
To a large degree.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Commissioner Wong?
No questions.
No questions. I, I guess the way I'm kind of looking at this, and correct me if I'm wrong, staff's comfortable whether the business on 018 or 019 would advertise on that sign. The determination is basically that either business, whoever the court decides owns it or has an easement or who has a right to that, staff is saying that either property owner would be acceptable on that sign.
Correct. Staff did a calculation based on our current code. When you look at our definitions of retail, retail often is comprised of multiple buildings or tenants within a building or sometimes even multiple parcels. And when they have shared facilities, which could be anything from driveway, parking areas, et cetera, we, we look at the site as, as a whole. And so that's why 18 and 19 are under one ownership. We could look at that as a shopping center. All three of those parcels have shared access. There's nothing preventing flow of traffic through those sites. And so it would, it would comply regardless of who the owner is.
And when you say that's how you define a shopping center, they don't need to have a reciprocal parking agreement? They don't need to have CCNRs which enshrine that it is a shopping center? It's, it's purely the physical construction of the site that staff is using to determine whether it's a shopping center?
Correct. It's not to say that those things don't often exist with more current shopping centers, but it is something for properties developed in the timeframe that, that this area was. It's not uncommon for us to not have copies of any reciprocal parking or access agreements. And I would defer to Chris in current planning if it's something we even require as new projects come forward for development of shopping centers. I think it's a private, private issue, correct?
That's correct.
Excuse me, Chairperson?
Yes.
Sorry, I just need to interrupt. I need to do a technical thing in Zoom and I didn't want it to make an announcement in the middle of your deliberation. Sorry.
No problem.
Just give me a couple more seconds. Okay. Thank you.
Sure. All right. Any further discussion this evening? Those folks on Zoom this evening want to chime in or ask any further questions?
Hi, this is Commissioner Borja. May I please ask county counsel on a little bit of guidance on the scope of this decision? And also whether or not the county may be held liable should we make a decision this evening on, as it relates to an ongoing litigation for this case? So I guess it's a little bit of a two-parter. Would that be okay, Chair Rachel?
Sure. Did you understand the question there?
I got, I got one of them. Would the county be held liable? What the county has done and what potentially you will be doing is affirming basically an opinion of the planning director, determination as to whether a use complies with zoning. It's important, once again, to look at what the scope of this hearing is. It has, at least to the extent that I can tell, based on the facts and arguments and evidence submitted, this decision has nothing to do with ownership, ownership rights, and entitlement to use between one owner or the adjacent owner. It's purely, is this sign, does this sign meet the zoning? So legally, what could happen is if you make a decision, say, well, denying the appeal, they could take us to court to undo that action. And they would undo that action. But there's no, there's no monetary liability here for this. It's a, it's a zoning determination.
Thanks, counsel. I appreciate that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would move to deny the appeal, maintaining the planning director's determination that the subject signs conform with zoning code development standards.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second. This is Commissioner Borja.
Second.
Sure.
Chair, why don't you have him call up to the podium?
Yeah, come on up to the podium and we can direct questions.
You know, if, if you put the county council's statement of just a couple of seconds ago on the record, because that's not in the letter. Okay? If that was in the letter, I probably wouldn't be standing here. If you amended your motion to deny the appeal so long as the letter is read, is understood to say that it doesn't affect ownership or rights, any rights to use the sign, I don't think I'd be objecting. I don't think I'd object.
And I don't have a problem with that.
That's, that's the way I read the report and determination anyway. So I don't have an issue with it.
I don't have an issue with modifying my motion.
I think you want to hear from the, the applicant before you add that to your, as part of your decision. But that's how I understand the, the planning director's decision to, to work.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Well, we, we take no issue with adding in language that says this is not a determination about ownership of the sign or something to that effect. I didn't read the, the opinion in that manner at all either. But if that would, you know, obviously alleviate some of the, the issues that we're having here today, I, I think that that'd be a prudent approach. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richards.
I'm willing to modify my motion to reflect that.
I'll second.
Second.
All right. Is that clear for the record?
So you're amending your motion to add that language that this is, this is not a determination regarding ownership. Correct?
That's the way I understand it. But I'll go to Chris real quick.
Yeah. So just to clarify, so the, the direction is for staff to, to reissue the determination letter with that information?
You could do it that way or just the, the decision of the BZA includes the, the explanation that his decision doesn't affect the ownership of the sign or use rights? I think that's the language I used when I was just speaking.
Right.
Ownership or use rights. It's purely a zoning decision.
Yeah, I think staff is comfortable with reissuing that letter with that clarification to it.
I am in agreement with that. Since I'm the one who officially is the, the person making the determination, Todd Smith, your planning director, I think it's important, as Bill indicated, to make sure that the record is very clear. And I think the simplest way to do that is to reissue that determination with those additional statements.
All right. We've got one hand behind you there. Ms. Hartman?
So we want to make sure that the revised letter is not appealable again? I mean, are we?
Understood.
I can't tell you that it's not.
Okay. So the same, okay.
So in that case, is it better to issue a clarification from the Board of Zoning Appeals with this?
Yeah. My preference would be just to have the BZA include that in its decision.
Perfect. As a result of the appeal.
Correct.
Correct.
The motion's to deny the appeal and the decision does not affect any ownership rights or use rights of the sign.
Staff, comfortable with that?
I think we are. And just to be clear, it would be the transmittal record affirming the decision with that language included.
Correct.
That would be the simplest in this case to address staff's concern about the appeal. Subsequent potential appeal.
It gets copied out to our two parties here. Everybody has that for their records?
Yes.
All right. I think we are there. Amending your motion as such?
As such.
Second?
Second.
All right. Will you go ahead and call the roll, please?
Member Borja?
Hi.
Member Corona Sabaniano? Members? Member Sabaniano?
No.
What was your response?
I'm sorry. Can you restate the motion?
The motion is to approve staff recommendations, which is to deny the appeal, but also add language regarding that the decision does not affect ownership or the use rights of the sign.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Member Wong?
Yes.
Tatishi?
Yes.
And Chairperson Rethel?
Yes.
And the motion carries by unanimous vote.
All right. Thank you for everyone sticking through us with that one. We'll move on to the Planning Commission this evening. If you go ahead and call item number two.
Item number two is, sorry, a use permit and design review located at SISI 141 Bradshaw Road, approximately 1,600 feet north of Elder Creek Road in the Vineyard Community. And the environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. Jessica Brandt with Planning and Environmental Review. I'll be providing the presentation for this item tonight. The project manager, Riley Schulz, is here. He is actually brand new and has already gotten a report in to you guys. So I'm doing the presentation tonight, but I'm sure he will be doing plenty of them moving forward. So this is Cochiu Construction. Next slide, please. Oh, wait. I have the, I have the power tonight. Okay. So this project is on Bradshaw Road. It's approximately 1,600 feet north of Elder Creek Road in the Vineyard Community. The setting, it is about a 9.96 acre piece of vacant land. It is in, within the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan limits. It is also within the West Jackson Master Plan area. I, I want to note that the master plan is not yet adopted, but that is something that is pending with the county. Community context, the subject parcel is designated extensive industrial in the general plan, interim agricultural reserve or, and surface mining in the Vineyard Community Plan and is zoned IR, which is interim agricultural reserve. I always go to the, to the throwback, but interim agricultural reserve with also a surface mining overlay. Surrounding land uses to the northwest, there is a semi-truck storage site and some vacant property. Northeast is vacant. And then to the east, south, and west, those are all agricultural residential properties. So a little bits of site and entitlement history. The subject parcel has had a series of pre-application meetings with the county, but has not had any subsequent development since those meetings. The subject parcel is vacant in county records. However, there was a code enforcement case that was opened in 2020 for the use of the subject parcel for a workshop and storage yard without proper entitlements and permitting. The property owner did subsequently come in. He requested a pre-application meeting to discuss his options and did turn in this application for a workshop and storage yard. The entitlements requested are a use permit from the Planning Commission to establish the service yard and workshop in the IRSM zone and a design review to determine substantial compliance with the Sacramento County-wide design guidelines. This project did go through environmental review and the environmental document was an initial study mitigated negative declaration. This was released for public review on November 10th, 2022. And a number of impacts or potential impacts were discussed. These include air quality. These include air quality, hydrology and water quality, biological resources, greenhouse gas emissions, and cultural resources. And as I go through the exhibits on the next slides, I'll point out some of the reasons why these were reviewed. But ultimately, the determination was that the project would result in a less than significant impact with the implementation of a handful of mitigation measures. So Exhibit A here is their site plan. The site is a long and narrow site, which is pretty typical out in this area. The applicant is actually only looking to develop the front, perhaps quarter of the site. As you can see from the site plan, there are significant areas at the back of the site that are under various flood zone designations. And so those would remain as is, which is part of the review that was done under SEQA. And then there is a little bit of development in a flood area near Bradshaw Road at the front. The, actually, this next site plan is a little better. So this is Exhibit B, which is the landscape plan, but it narrows down to the actual development area on the site. And as you can see, a lot of it, when I say development area, it's simply a gravel area. Again, looking to store construction equipment and other things that they are utilizing for their business. They do plan to have one building at the southwest corner of the site developed. It would be a kind of equipment storage building. And then there would be some paving around that building. They have an existing driveway that they're going to improve at the north side of the site, and then they would put in another driveway at the south side. And between the building and the driveways and some additional work in the front, there was some need to remove trees. And so that's part of the impacts that were reviewed, and some mitigation measures have been included to ensure that there isn't impacts to nesting habitat, and that tree canopy removal is mitigated for as well. On this landscape plan, you can also see that there's significant landscaping along the frontage. Frontage landscaping is the only landscaping that would be required here. There is one tree that they show in their parking area for shade, but this is the landscaping that's required for this use. It is 25 feet in width. It looks really narrow on this just because the site is so large. One thing that a slide will come up on that was brought up by both the Design Review Advisory Committee and the CPAC was that they wanted to see full landscaping for additional sort of block of the gravel area. And then they also wanted to see the landscaping be more naturalistic. So that meant, you know, no topiary-ing the trees. So the applicant has agreed to a couple of conditions that relate to this. A little thicker planting and then letting it grow naturally. And it's reflected here in the amount of trees and bushes shown. Another item that came up during the review process was that they are on well-inseptic, and they do plan to remain on well-inseptic. There is not sewer and water available to the site. Part of the expectation when they go through their fire department review is that they will be required to put a fire protection plan in place that will likely include a water storage tank. And so the thought is that the tank would be either in the building or adjacent to the building, which is within the developed area. So it's not shown precisely on the site, but they will work with the fire department on that component. And then this is the elevations and materials exhibit for the building. Looks like an industrial building. The building itself is about 26 feet in height. It was reviewed by our Design Review Advisory Committee, and they did find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines. Again, with that sort of bulked up landscaping to provide a little bit of shielding for folks going on Bradshaw. And so, as I'd mentioned before, the Vineyard CPAC did recommend, they met in July and recommended that you approve the requested entitlements with the landscaping, the design review, similar recommendation. And as I said, limiting the hedging as well to maintain a rural character in the neighborhood. And staff has reviewed the project and relevant general plan policies, community plan policies and zoning. And so zoning administrator should be Planning Commission. We believe the Planning Commission can find the project consistent with the general plan and relevant community plan and zoning. We have found that we can make the findings for support of their conditional use permit. And we believe that the compliance with mitigation measures and conditions of approval will ensure that the project has a less than significant impact on the environment. And so with that, we are recommending approval. And we recommend the Planning Commission determine that the environmental analyst analysis, wow, prepared pursuant to SEQUAs adequate and complete, adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, approve the use permit subject to the findings and conditions, and determine that the project is substantially compliant with the design guidelines, again, subject to findings and conditions. And with that, my presentation is over, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brandt. Questions for staff this evening? Commissioner Wong?
I have a question. This is just sort of more of a general question, not really to the project itself. But I noticed on the staff report, it indicates that SACUMD and the county have not adopted thresholds of significance for the assessment of health risks, health risks, excuse me, sorry, health risks related to the emission of criteria pollutants? And I was just wondering why that is? Or at least, I mean, you can't speak for SACUMD, but for the county, how come we don't have those thresholds of significance?
So we have our environmental coordinator here tonight, Joel Enman, and I think she is going to find a little bit of background and respond.
Okay, thank you.
So the reason we have not adopted thresholds of significance is because of the Friant Ranch decision, which essentially, I'm going to try to read some of this really quickly and add to that as far as why not. But essentially, out of that court decision, there was a determination to review projects based on a minor or major project. And if it fell within a certain health screening tool, then we were able to utilize that. And it was determined to not be, as far as I believe, it was determined to not have a SEQA impact. But if you give me one more minute, I'm going to keep reviewing on that.
Okay, so it kind of sounds like if a certain parcel of land happens to fall within a database such as like Enviro, I think it's called EnviroScreen or something like that, that says like, look, generally speaking, this area is fine, then we kind of say, all right, generally speaking, there's not a threshold of significance here for criteria pollutants. Is that kind of-ish, kind of?
Go ahead, yeah.
This is Todd Smith, Planning Director. I'm just chiming in on this one as well, since we've been dealing with it for the last couple of years since the Friant Ranch decision. There are tools available to help assess whether a project would result in additional health risks to the population, as you indicated. And I think what Joel was describing was a certain scale of project might, you know, major versus minor might have different results, obviously. At this point, though, the Sacramento Air District and several other air districts have not really developed what that magic number is to be a significant impact for an individual project. It's still an area of emerging practice in SEQA. And so ultimately, that's the reason we don't have an adopted significance threshold yet. However, we do, as a matter of practice, as a result of that case, disclose what the potential health risks are based on the use of either the minor or the major tool, depending on the project and the circumstances.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for staff this evening? Commissioners Borja or Corona Sabaniano, any questions for staff?
No question here. Thank you.
No question.
All right, at this time, we invite the applicant up. And we'll go ahead and get you sworn in.
I don't intend to say anything important, so it's not necessary. I'm kidding.
Please raise your right hand in appropriate responses. I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth to help you God? If you do not swear, do you so firm?
I do.
Thank you. And just state your name.
My name is John Leonard with Leonard Development Company, representing Bill Kouchu, the owner of the subject property.
And this is Javed Sadeq of JTS Engineering, project engineer of record.
Good evening.
And just say, I have been sworn, and then we're good to go.
I've been sworn, and we are good to go. Thank you.
All right, yeah, go ahead.
Questions? We actually would like to thank staff. They've done a great job. It's taken a bit of time to get here, but I appreciate everybody's effort. It's been a focused effort, and the process that we went through was, though elongated, functional, and we're satisfied with the recommendations as well as the conditions. And we're prepared to proceed based on the presentation that was made this evening, if it's affirmed by your board.
Perfect. So you're in agreement with all the conditions of approval?
Yes.
All right, any questions for the applicant team this evening? Any questions from on-high Zoom crew? All right, here in none. Thank you both for being here this evening.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we're going to go ahead and open up public comment.
And I did not receive any requests to speak, and we do not have anyone online.
Thank you so much. With that, we'll go ahead and close public comment and move on to commission deliberation.
I will move staff recommendations.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion before I call the roll? All right, will you please call the roll?
Member Borja?
Aye.
Corona Sabaniano?
Yes.
Tati Chi?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
And Chairperson Rethel?
Yes.
And the motion carries by unanimous vote.
Thank you. That concludes item number two this evening, and we'll move it on to item number three.
Item number three is a special development permit and design review. It is located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Pachini Avenue and Augusta Way in the South Sacramento community, and the environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration.
Before we get started, I also wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Scholes for his first one done. Good job. All right, now we'll carry on with item number three.
Was it read? What was it?
The clicker was there? Do you see the clicker?
Yeah. Was it read into the record?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Apologies.
That's the right one, right?
Yeah.
Okay, just making sure.
Good evening, Chair Rethel, Commissioners. I'm David Olrey-Yeros, the project planner for the Augusta Way Apartments project. The project's located at the northwestern corner of Pachini Avenue and Augusta Way, within the South Sacramento community. And it's within the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan. The existing setting, it's on a 0.60 acre parcel that's currently vacant and is relatively flat. The site's within the Old Florintown Special Planning Area with a mixed-use residential subdistrict, which allows up to 20 dwelling units per acre. Surrounding land uses include vacant land to the north, four plexes to the south, industrial yard and warehouse to the east, and a place of worship to the west. So there is no history of development on the site. In March of 1950, the Pachini tract was recorded, which created the subject property's parent parcels. In September of 2004, the SRC created the existing configuration with the 0.6 acre parcel. And in October of 2022, a right-of-way abandonment was granted by the Board of Supervisors, which specifically the western portion of the property was a right-of-way. It was found that that was no longer needed by DOT. The project proposes 10 dwelling units, two bedrooms, and the entitlement request is a special development permit to deviate from frontage landscape planner requirements, trash enclosure landscaping requirements, tree spacing along the right-of-way frontage, and carport material. Specifically, eight-foot frontage landscape planner is required. As proposed, it's five feet. For trash enclosure landscaping, it's five feet on three sides. Propose is five feet on two sides. Tree spacing, the standard is 30 feet on center. The project proposes 40 feet on center. And for carport material, the project proposes metal, when metal is not typically permitted. A design review to comply with the Sacramento County-wide design guidelines is also included in the entitlement package. And here we have the site plan. So initially, they did have that right-of-way shown on the western portion of the site. However, staff did identify that that was not needed, and we did get some additional landscaping and parking spaces. Here we have the landscape plan. And here are the elevations, generally a monochromatic color palette. For environmental review, initial study and mitigated negative declaration were prepared and released to the public for review on April 15. Impacts discussed included land use, air quality, hydrology and water quality, biological resources, cultural resources, and greenhouse gas emissions. And that initial study and MND concluded that the project would result in a less than significant impact with the implementation of mitigation measures. The South Sacramento CPAC did meet on October 25, 2021, and recommends that the Planning Commission approve the requested entitlements. The DRAC also met on November 18, 2021, and recommends that the Planning Commission find the project in substantial compliance with the county-wide design guidelines. So project analysis, the project is consistent with the general plan, community plan, Old Florintown Special Planning Area ordinance, and zoning code as conditioned. The project is compatible with surrounding zoning and land uses, and there are no significant environmental concerns. The project will provide 10 new four-rent residential units. And the findings for the granting of the special development permit as provided for in the zoning code can be made as detailed in the staff report. And so with that, staff recommends approval of the project and recommends that the Planning Commission take the following actions: determine the environmental analysis, prepare pursuant to SEQA as adequate and correct; adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program; and approve the special development permit, subject to the findings and conditions; and also find the project in substantial compliance with the county-wide design guidelines. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. The applicant is also in attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Olrey. Questions for staff this evening? Commissioner Wong?
Yes, I was wondering, I mean, I see that there are four deviations requested. Three of them seem to be pretty minor, in my opinion. But I was really curious about the carport material deviation. And, you know, normally metal carports are not allowed, yet I guess it's been determined that this is okay. Why isn't the applicant able to do, or why does the applicant need to have a metal carport in this instance?
Generally, it was found that the aesthetic, it went with the monochromatic, and then also for, to keep the units at affordable cost, and that's per the applicant. The applicant can also speak more to that, but that was what was included in their application.
So can I follow up really quick?
You can talk as long as you want about special development permits. You know, they're my favorite.
So the reason behind wanting to be able to have a metal carport is to make them more affordable, or the units more affordable, but I want to clarify that these units would be market rate rentals, correct?
They would be market rate rentals. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You took the words right out of my mouth.
And if I might add too, I believe we did take that out of the most recent zoning code update, but since this was, came in under the old zoning code, that was subject to that standard. to that standard.
Oh, so there was a...
Sorry, what now? I guess I'm confused on that comment.
So on the carport materials, it came in under the prior zoning code, and so it was processed consistent with that code. And so that's why that's a deviation that has been subsequently removed from the zoning code.
Okay, so the current zoning code allows for metal carports?
Yes.
Okay.
So just to maybe follow up a little bit more on that, so decision was made to, for projects that were in progress, to either evaluate them based on the zoning code that was at the time of the, at the time that the application was submitted, or based on the new, the new code, or with the, I guess amended code, if you will. And so in this instance, a decision was made to process under the current, or I'm sorry, under the previous code. So understanding that those deviate, that that deviation specifically was being changed. However, there were reasons to process it under the previous zoning code.
So we now, we went from not allowing metal carports to allowing metal carports?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, I recall there being conversations about that perhaps being a more dated design standard, and that there were, that there were examples of higher-quality projects utilizing metal carports. That was a design discussion as we went through and evaluated potential changes to the, to the zoning code and to the countywide design standards for multifamily housing.
Any other questions? I think it was mostly over, do you have any other, I can go ask the applicant, but was there any other justification for the other deviations for the special development permit, or was it just all cost-related?
It was related also to the constrained site, so 0.6 acres, to make it work with surface-level parking and minimum landscape requirements.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, we will go ahead and invite the applicant up this evening. And the clerk will get you sworn in this evening.
Yes, good evening. This is Seis Wagner, architect. I'm speaking for Bobby, the developer of the project. You want to swear me in?
Yes. Please raise your right hand in appropriate responses. I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this commission is the truth to help you God? If you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Thank you.
Well, basically, we're satisfied with the planning's decision as to the feasibility of the project. I would be glad to answer any questions you might have about metal carports, if you have any further ones. Specifically, they were chosen because the building is of a contemporary style and aesthetics. If you look at it, it's a very cleanly-done building, and we just felt that the metal configuration would be more appropriate to that building. The stairways to the structure, the railings on the building, they're all metal as well. If you look at the roof structure of the building, that is to say, it's sloped, it's slanted, kind of reminiscent of a metal carport-type situation. So aesthetically, it just felt comfortable to do it that way. From an architectural point of view, structural point of view, they're more cost-effective, as one might guess. They're prefabricated, which makes it easier to construct and build. They also have a greater resistance to lateral loading from earthquakes and from wind loading, shear, fear loading from wind. So for all those reasons, and their longevity. So if you build a wooden carport, you put it together with six-by-six, eight-by-eight timbers, whatever, bolted together with bolts, this and that. In our climate, with the dryness of the, and then the wetness in the winter and whatnot, you begin to develop a lot of slack and lag, and the bolts loosening up against the drying wood for, over a period of time, years. So actually, metal carports would be the ideal solution for our climate, not wood. So that's why they were chosen. Is there any other questions about the limitations on the site? For example, the parking bay is a little bit narrower, it's six feet instead of eight. We are either going to conform with the requirements of parking, or we're going to conform with the requirements of the planners. We chose to conform with the requirements of parking, and so planners suffered a little bit. Other than that, I don't think there's any other issues that are really important.
All right, questions for the applicant this evening? All right, any questions from the Zoom commissioners this evening? All right, thank you for your time. I guess, sorry, right before you sit down, before you sit down, I do have one question for you, sorry. Can you just talk a little bit about the spacing of the trees also?
I'm confused about the spacing of trees myself. I'll have to confess, I have not been able to review my own plans and drawings since Saturday. The internet has been unavailable to me, and unfortunately, a great deal of my work is stored on the cloud. I'll have to ask David, if he can explain to me why the trees are at 40 feet and not 30.
So there's an instance of where they're at 40 feet on center due to driveway locations, but the majority are at 30 feet on center.
That's kind of what I thought. Thank you, David.
Perfect. I wouldn't think that would require a deviation if there's a driveway in the way, but that answers my question. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to public comment.
And we did not receive any requests to speak. I don't have any speaker slips except from the applicant, so.
Perfect. Seeing none, hearing none, we will go ahead and close public comment. And I guess I'm not a fan of special development permits. You guys all know that. I'm not a fan of having conditions and not enforcing them, but I did just get a chance to review what's in our current development standards, and it does talk about the materials matching the buildings, instead of flat-out prohibition on metal carports. So understood. So that's really, to me, not a development permit issue, and one tree being off more than 30 feet isn't really an issue either, so I can, and I can get there as far as a constrained site with having slightly reduced planters. So with that, I'll go ahead and move staff recommendation. Any further comments or deliberation?
Yes, I guess I'd like to commend staff on what I thought was a very, or was a great report, very well-written out and easy to follow, and also thank the applicant for helping explain the differences between metal and wood carports. Generally speaking, I also am not the biggest fan of deviations, because I kind of feel that's like, well, why do we have these conditions if we're just going to deviate from them all the time? But in this particular case, I thought that all of the, you know, the deviations requested here are extremely reasonable. So I am also happy to support this bill, or bill, project.
All right, any comments from the Zoom commissioners this evening before I call for the vote? All right, hearing none, I'm going to assume they're not muted and just talking. If you'll go ahead and call the roll.
I don't see anyone with their hand raised, so. So that was a motion by Chairperson Raythel, and a second by member Tati Chi? Okay. Borja?
Yes.
Corona Sabaniano?
Yes.
Tati Chi?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
And Chairperson Raythel?
Yes.
And the motion carries by unanimous vote.
All right, with that, we'll go ahead and move on to item number four.
Item number four is the Ause Permit, Special Development Permit and Design Review, located at 6989 Watt Avenue, approximately 450 feet north of the intersection of Watt Avenue and Elkhorn Boulevard, within the North Watt Avenue Corridor Plan in the North Highlands Community, and the environmental document is exempt.
Good evening again. I'm David Olreyros, the project planner for the Popeyes at North Watt Corridor project. The project is located at 6849 Watt Avenue, approximately 450 feet north of the intersection of Watt Avenue and Elkhorn, and is within the North Highlands community. The site's on two parcels totaling 0.76 acres, and was previously developed with a commercial building, but has been vacant since 2008. So some community context, it's within the North Watt Corridor Special Planning Area, within the Commercial Mixed-Use District of the Elkhorn Commercial Core District. So kind of how those work is the CMU or Commercial Mixed-Use, that's more zoomed in to the specific parcels, and then you have the Elkhorn Commercial Core, which is more of a general area, so like it's, it's a focus of more intense development. So surrounding land uses, to the north is vacant residential mixed-use zoning, to the east is a retail shopping center, to the south is an auto repair shop, and to the west is a vehicle storage yard. So a little bit more on the North Watt Avenue Corridor Plan. It was adopted by the board in 2012, with the purpose and intent of guiding the corridor from a lower-density, auto-oriented strip commercial corridor to a mixed-use, transit-oriented urban corridor. It provides additional required findings for the granting of a special development permit, namely, the proposed use or deviation from SBA standards is justified by exceptional design over and above the standards of the SBA, and any proposed use can provide evidence that it brings benefit to the community and does not create any nuisance or public safety concern. It is also important to note that the final hearing body for this is the Board of Supervisors per the SBA for the granting of a special development permit. So a little bit more on the Commercial Mixed-Use District. It's intended to promote a shopping and service district centered around the Watt and Elkhorn Intersections, and prescribes a 0.65 minimum floor area ratio, intended to provide a development density supportive of transit. The Elkhorn Commercial Core, which is that broader kind of area focus, it's envisioned by the SBA as being exemplified by commercial mixed-use buildings, running onto the street with storefront windows, and entrances, awnings, arcades, and architectural elements, animating the front facade and elevations. So some site entitlement history. The site was initially developed between 1957 and 1964 with a 2,800-square-foot commercial building. That building was demolished in 2008, and the site has remained vacant. There's no history of entitlements or open code cases. So the project does propose a drive-through restaurant, and the entitlement request includes a use permit to allow drive-through with amplified sound within 300 feet of a residential zoning district, a special development permit to allow maximum front yard, step-back deviations, minimum build-to-line percentage deviations, and minimum floor area ratio deviations. The drive-through entrance and exit separation from public right-of-way is also requested for a deviation, and it is important to note that they are now meeting the landscape planner with requirement. A design review to comply with the North Watt Corridor Plan and Countywide Design Guidelines is also included in the request. So here we have the site plan, showing the proposed 3,149-square-foot restaurant. And here is the landscape plan. It is important to note that they also do include trees from the North Watt Corridor Plan planting list. And the Design Review Advisory Committee did review this and recommended the addition of outdoor seating, so that is shown at the front there. Here are the proposed elevations. So advisory recommendations, the North Highland CPAC met on June 10 of 2021 and recommends approval of the requested entitlements. The DRAC also met on July 26, 2021, and recommends that the project be found in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines. So project analysis. The project is inconsistent with several general plan policies, and is in conflict with policies related to commercial corridors and transit-oriented development. It's inconsistent with the North Watt Corridor SBA stated purpose and intent of creating an urban mixed-use center with denser transit-supportive urban form, diverging from the lower-density, auto-oriented nature currently on the corridor. However, the project is consistent with the policies of the 1974 North Highlands North Central Area Community Plan, however, that is a dated document. Many of the required findings for the granting of the special development permit are unable to be made. So with that, staff recommends denial, and recommends that the Planning Commission recommend to the Board of Supervisors that they recognize exempt status of the request under Section 15303 of SEQA, deny the use permit to allow drive-through with amplified sound within 300 feet of a residential zoning district, deny the request for the special development permit, find the project in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines, however, not in substantial compliance with the corridor plan design guidelines. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. And Julio from Milestone and Associates is here in attendance, representing the applicant
Questions for staff this evening?
So if I, I understood that the CPAC in North Highlands, though, is in support of the project as, and the special use permits of the community, local community there is supporting it, though staff also recommend the same recommendations to them?
That is correct, yes.
Did they offer any thoughts on why the, to move forward with it despite the concerns raised by staff?
The CPAC explained that they were concerned about the use of the property being vacant and potential for folks camping on the site and potential associated nuisances.
Okay, thank you.
I thought I read in the staff report that the CPAC got a recommendation that was not the same as our, we got a recommendation to approve, not deny.
We're recommending denial, and the CPAC's recommended approval.
And it's important to point out that when we go to the CPACs, we don't go with a staff recommendation to the CPAC. We do lay out potential conflicts with policy documents, but we're not prepared, or we're not providing them with a staff recommendation. So their recommendation is just based on their knowledge of the community, consistency with, or neighborhood compatibility, consistency with their vision for the community.
And I would further add that I think Chair Raythel, you're right, well, I know you're right, because I'm looking at the staff report here. To Chris's point, planning staff had not completed the analysis of the project's consistency with either the general plan or the North Watt Corridor Plan at the time the project was presented to the CPAC.
And I guess that's a bigger question for me. Do we typically not do a consistency analysis? I just feel for the applicant to have to go through this process, and if the consistency analysis isn't done at the CPAC or before the DRAC, it's a little confusing. But that's typical, that we don't do a consistency analysis before the CPAC?
That is typical. I should also point out, we've been in communication with the applicant team even prior to the submittal of an application, and so the applicant team was well-aware that staff believed there to be some significant conflicts with the, with the corridor plan, with the SBA, and they decided to make application, understanding that they were unlikely to receive staff's support for an application. So we've been, we've made it very clear to them about what staff's position would be based on the corridor plan and the SBA.
Sounds good. My second question is just a process question. A lot of times, use permits are handled at the Planning Commission level, but this one's going to the Board of Supervisors.
Yeah, again, as David pointed out, pointed out, it was the special development permit in this case. Any deviations from the development standards in the, in the SBA require a board-level approval of the special development permit. So it was intentional by the board in adopting the, the North Watt Corridor Plan and the SBA that if a project was to deviate, that it would require a pretty onerous process to, to deviate from those standards.
Got it. So that would be... So that would be with approval or recommendation to approve, but if there is no use permit, because a use permit would typically be decided with this body, right?
Oh, sure.
But if there was no use permit, then how would there be any deviations from the special development permit?
If there were no, let's say there were no use permit requirements, because the project does not meet development standards, they would need a special development permit to the Board of Supervisors. That would be the only entitlement necessary. In the instance for, or with this project, because there is a use permit and a special development permit, our development code and our user guide spells out that those are bundled for processing purposes, and the higher of the decision bodies is who considers the entitlement request.
Thank you. Any questions for staff from commissioners on Zoom? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll invite the applicant up to address the commission, and to start off, we'll get you sworn in.
Let me move this down a little bit. Please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses. I do, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this commission is the truth to help you, God? If you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Julio Tinejero from Milestone Associates. We're the design firm for the project. We've been going through this process for a while, as you guys can imagine. We want to thank staff. They've been really helpful through this whole process, but I'm here to kind of give you a little bit of history of the project, and then also share justification why we request the uses that we're asking for. The owner, or the applicant, is the existing Popeyes franchisee for the area, so he owns a Popeyes, which is literally right the next block. He's leasing that property, so he has, now has an opportunity to actually own his own piece of land and own his own building. So he had an opportunity, and he wanted to find something close to the area. So he found this property, he purchased the property, and we had discussions early on with staff, and like was mentioned, very forward, straight up, telling us, hey, this is going to be challenged because of the new specific plan. We did, however, reach out to the community, and, you know, everybody was in favor of it. CPAC, and you saw the advisory recommendations. So the community itself was like in favor, because it's literally one block from where it's at now. They didn't want to lose the Popeyes. And so we had an opportunity here to provide a new building, new use on this location, and provide the same service and food options to the community, which this location's very profitable and very successful. I don't know if you guys have gone out there or not, but, so, I think the community saw that as definitely advantage to keep them in the community. I wanted to talk about, again, our justification for the entitlement request. Okay, so number one, the use permit. So if you guys read, it says to allow a drive-through with amplified sound within 300 feet of the residential zoning. If you look, it's a site plan, can we put it on there? Well, if you look at the site plan, the amplified area are the speakers where you order your food. And if you look at the site plan, it's literally on the west edge of, or the entrance of the drive-through is where the speakers are. Those speakers are actually like 280 feet from the residential, which is located across the street of Watt Avenue. So Watt Avenue is, as you know, a very busy corridor. So we were told that it doesn't specify the actual amplification. It's just says a restaurant with amplified sound, which is what we're proposing. But we feel justified, our request is that we're 280 feet from the residential, but our noise analysis, we had consultants said that the noise generated by these amplified speakers being at 280 or being at 300 was not a significant impact based on the noise that is existing on the Watt Corridor. So the Watt Corridor itself, traffic noise, is generating more than what the amplified speakers that we're proposing at this, as per the site layout. So I just wanted to ask you why, or state why we feel that that wasn't going to be a significant impact, but again, that's one of the requests for the use permit. The special development permit, I think, is the biggie, but that is because this site, basically, if you read the North Watt Corridor specific plan, it's looking for a big, a building that's covered basically two-thirds of the property. So they're looking for big building, and no one's been able to get that property for that reason, because being in the development business, or A&amp;E, architecture and engineering, we are not seeing these big box stores anymore like they were for a while. So that's the reason why this parcel has been vacant for, since 2008. It cannot meet the floor ratio of a two-thirds coverage for the building. So that's why we requested, if we can get that special development to allow a smaller building footprint. Obviously, the building we're proposing is a lot smaller than the two-thirds that's required per the specific plan. The minimum build-to-line percentage, again, we couldn't meet that because of the building that's proposed. The drive-through entrance and separation from public right-of-way, the county has ordinance that does not allow exit-only driveways. So originally, we had this drive-through exit going directly to Watt Avenue, but it's an exit-only, and so the county told us that we couldn't do that, so they made us turn it, route it, direct it back to the entrance driveway off of Watt, which, you know, we couldn't meet the separation that the specific plan's requesting of the separation of the two driveways. So that was, but as you guys, what we're proposing is not out of the ordinary for a fast-food development. We do this on almost every driveway, every drive-through in Sacramento where we cannot exit directly to the right-of-way. So again, we're not asking for something specific, I mean, something out of the ordinary. It's pretty common. And then, as David said, the landscape requirement has been met. The exhibit does show the 25-foot landscape setback. We provided all the other items that was requested, and as you see, the design review, again, the design review is more like an industrial, big warehouse, big box type. We proposed the design of, that you saw, that's more in line with the prototype design for the Popeyes restaurant. And although it didn't meet the guidelines, as shown on the advisory committee, they agree that they like the design and they like the building, and even the staff made a finding that we did meet, we met the countywide design guidelines, but not specifically the corridor guidelines, because again, the corridor is looking for a big-box type architecture. So based on what we provided, which we feel is going to be a really good project, we already know it's going to be well-supported by the community, because they already support the existing Popeyes, based on the support of CPAC and DRAC, we just really feel it's a good project for the area. As it was mentioned earlier, it's been vacant since 2008. We don't, there has not been anybody, even before my own, like applicant bought the property, hadn't been approached to do a big-box type project. So to keep it from being vacant, and again, like mentioned earlier, with whatever problems we have with vacant properties, we want to develop this property, make it a plus, a benefit for the community, move, once the, obviously, this Popeyes gets built, the other Popeyes is going to be closed and will be moved over, and the landlord for that property already has different ideas for that location, but the Popeyes will be still available to the community and the neighborhoods, surrounding neighborhoods. So with that, we request that you please, if you guys consider our justifications and you approve our entitlement request. So with that, I thank you, and I could answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant this evening? Mr. Wall?
Can you tell me, does the current Popeyes does not have a drive-through? Is that correct?
No, it does.
Oh, it does have a drive-through?
Yes.
Okay. Because I was looking online, and I, it didn't look like on pictures that there was a drive-through. There is one, okay. And is that drive-through also, let's see here, how far, I guess, is that drive-through from the residential area?
Oh, the existing one that's now?
Yeah, the existing Popeyes.
That's literally across the street from the residential, which is on, residential on the east side of Watt. And that's, I guess, that's a good point. We haven't had any neighbors from that side complain about the noise amplification of the speakers, and those speakers are actually closer than the speakers that we're proposing with this layout. So that's, that's why we feel that it's not going to be a nuisance or an issue with the neighbors that are further away than the ones that are existing right now.
Just a little clarification from staff. I believe it's the property to the north that we're discussing that's zoned residential that doesn't have houses on it.
It's zoned for mixed use, but yes, I did want to provide that clarification, is that there is a active, you know, it's, the zoning would allow for different types of uses, however, we do have an active application currently for the property to the north of this site that is for residential use. I will say, the, you know, the position of staff on this is really related to the special development permit, however, the, you know, the conflict between the corridor plan and the special planning area ordinance, not as much with concern on the proximity to residential with the speaker box.
Can I interject on that? Or respond to that?
Sure.
From the very beginning that we submitted our application, obviously, we didn't know about this proposed project that's coming up now. We were always told it was a residential across the street from day one. That was, that's the reason why the use permit came into play. Otherwise, if it wasn't the residential proximity, we wouldn't have to request the use permit. So this is news to me today that we have an application for the north, but obviously that we've been involved with this from 2019, whenever we started this, and we've been meeting all the requirements that were given to us through the process.
I think the difference is it's zoned residential, right? So the code says you have to be 300 feet from zoned residential. So the zoning of that property to the north.
But it's a current property, it's not zoned residential.
Correct. It's zoned for mixed use, and so it could be multiple different types of development scenarios there. It just so happens that the application that's been filed is for an apartment community.
But does that have to go through the use permit process as well?
They are in for a, I believe, a use permit for that residential development.
Right, because again, that never was brought up by planning from day one that, hey, it might be residential north of you, you might want to reconsider it. That was never brought up. It was always across the street, the residential. So again, this is news to me, but I don't think that should be considered with this application, since it's not currently zoned residential.
So I guess, is there a sidewalk that is currently on the property?
It's on the frontage. It's already existing along the right-of-way.
Okay. So it will be walkable along there?
And we provide an accessible path from the public right-of-way to our front door as required per code, so it will be an accessible site. We provide a patio for outdoor seating, so it's very pedestrian-friendly.
Other questions for the applicant this evening? I'll move over to the Zoom commissioners.
Good evening. This is Commissioner Borja. I was just wondering, Chair Rethel, if the applicant has considered all of the findings and/or stipulations on attachment number two, should the Board decide to move this forward?
On attachment number two? I'm sorry, I didn't hear what.
That's the conditions and findings?
Yeah, the conditions and findings, yes. If the project gets approved, we are in agreement with that.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the Zoom commissioners?
No questions.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to public comment this evening.
We did not receive any person signed up to speak for this item either.
All right. With that, we'll go ahead and close public comment, and we'll move on to deliberation.
Mr. Chairman, I would, conceptually, I don't necessarily know that I would disagree with this project just on the noise components or others, but I do struggle with changing the corridor plan. The communities, I don't know when this one exactly was adopted, but I believe most of the communities did these in the kind of early 2000 timeframes or late 90, I can't remember.
2012?
2012.
2012.
So I know that different communities went through this process at length, getting a lot of involvement to try to address the future of these corridors. And so to deviate significantly from there, I just am not in support of moving around the corridor plans that were adopted at those times. So again, I don't have necessarily the concerns around the design or what this would normally be, but its location doesn't fit with the corridor plan, so I'm not in favor. I would be in favor of staff's recommendation.
I think I'd have to agree with Commissioner Teteishi in that it's, you know, a number of the comments that the staff report makes, you know, I do find to be concerning in how it's not, you know, it's not consistent with, you know, this corridor plan, and the whole, one of the purposes of the corridor plan is to help plan for the future, and if we allow for, you know, things to kind of continue a status quo in how we're doing it currently, or how they were doing it 10 years ago before the plan was adopted, it's kind of like, well, what was the point of coming up with the plan then? So I don't think that, you know, I don't think I can be supportive of this project today.
Zoom commissioners?
I don't think I have anything else to add other than to agree with comments made. I'm also, I also have concerns and not supportive of this project today.
Good evening. This is Commissioner Borja. I read the 2012 plan report, almost 600 pages of it, and while I do agree with the merits of my other commissioners, I do think that there is merit on the fact that the CPAC supported this project, and there has not been any other issues. I do believe in the importance of going to our planning documents, but also realize that government needs to be a bit more flexible when it comes to like the changing community needs. I think our environment has changed from 2012, and while this is still scenario-building and looking for future-proofing, I think there might be some instances where, and I do believe, I drove to this location in studying this particular subject, and yeah, I'm not going to lie, there was a long line at Popeyes. And so I think that there, I did not see any, you know, arguments from the community on this, at least from what I have been presented, and so I'm more so inclined to move the project onwards and perhaps, you know, advise the applicant or the environmental planning team or the planning team to really try to see if there's any stakeholder engagement or any potential impact, that negative impact that can happen should this project not move forward. And so that's my two cents. Thank you.
All right. I guess that leaves me with my comments. I'm generally in agreement with my commissioners. It's just, I think, heavy auto-use component that I struggle with. I think a restaurant could be a great location here, but I don't necessarily love, or think that the auto-oriented component really fits with the corridor plan. And so at this point, I don't think I can support the project, but I do, you know, I do look at it and go, I wish we could do these consistency analyses a bit earlier. It sounds like this was a known issue that was going on and was trans- It sounds like this was a known issue that was going on and was transmitted, but it's tough for the CPAC if they don't get that information to really weigh all of that. So I don't know, I don't know how much to, to look at that. And it's tough because there's a location that's really not that far from there. It's obviously supported by the community. And it's an opportunity for a smaller business owner to own a parcel, which I struggle to not allow that because I really do support that from a small business standpoint. But just due to the auto-oriented component of it and the desire, you'll end up with really another auto-oriented component because that other Popeyes does have a drive-through. It is set up. So that will be the other folks that move in there. So it's really, really that's what I'm struggling with is the auto-oriented portion of it. So do I have a motion?
Before we go to the motion, I would just like to, Commissioner Borja does raise a good point in that we built a lot of these corridor plans a decade ago or more Carmichael's I know I was very active with in the early 2000s, mid 2000s. And we had grand ideas as communities on what the future could be, and they don't always come to fruition. So I still believe that we lock in, to a degree, that what the community's desires are with their input on these plans. But it may be worth, at some point, kind of revisiting some of these plans because, you know, at some level, we designed them with this idea of perfection and we can't always get that. And so sometimes I don't disagree with the idea of this land has been vacant since 2008 with nothing on it. And so there is an opportunity for something to be there can seem like maybe that's a better alternative. But it goes back to what's our desire within the community with these plans. And so I don't know how frequently the county has decided to look at the frequency of even, I'll say, opening up for some level of community, you know, revisits without necessarily having to redo the whole plans. But at some point, I would encourage the county to look at these things because I'm not going to deviate from those corridor plans. From my experience, they were commitments that were made to those communities. But again, they were commitments made in 2012. It's now '23 or in some cases '04, '03 timeframes, and we just may need to, at some point, revisit those things.
So I'll respond to that one. Commissioner Teteishi, we appreciate those thoughts and we often feel similarly when we're looking at some of our older plans that are very prescriptive. In fact, this corridor plan in particular, we have begun re-looking at, in fact, as recently as this fall, past fall, we engaged with CECOG and the Urban Land Institute to do a week-long stakeholder listening session all along the North Watt corridor to really identify what were the fundamental issues, what are the fundamental issues that are keeping that plan as it's envisioned from being implemented, with a specialty focus on providing housing in an infill corridor. We also, late last year, excuse me, in November, took a workshop to the Board of Supervisors highlighting a number of code amendments, including SPAs such as this, in terms of a priority list, to seek the board's input. And one of their pieces of input, the board, was a focus on these SPAs, the corridor plans, that we're not seeing the magnitude of revitalization that was originally envisioned from whether it was 2012 or earlier. But still a desire expressed by the board to see a lot more infill development. And so we have heard that, not just from you as a commissioner, but from the board as well. And so we're presuming we can get support from the community again to take those fresh looks. We're prepared to do that.
Great. With that, I would move staff recommendation.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further comments before I call for a vote? All right. Please call the roll.
Member Borja.
Sorry, folks. It's going to be a no for me and would still wish for the success of this project.
Karina Savignano?
Yes.
Teteishi?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
And Chairperson Raitel?
Yes.
And the motion carries with Commissioner Borja voting no on the recommendations.
All right. That concludes item number four this evening. And we'll move on to the Planning Director's Report.
Well, I just want to provide a brief update on a couple of items that were before the commission at various points late last year. In fact, it was after the December 12 commission hearing, we were at the Board of Supervisors for a number of items. First, Gerbert Creek Units 2 and 3, two separate subdivisions, were approved December 13th. A tributary point self-storage project out off of Hazel Avenue, that was approved that day. The SB 2 zoning code, quick amendment related to garage sizes, you may or may not recall that one. That one was approved that day as well. And then two general plan amendment items, the Mather Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan was amended into the general plan and the Jackson Township Specific Plan was also approved on December 13th. There was one item that we were teed up to go that day. It was the Easton Place Land Use Master Plan Amendment. We were ready to go, but there was a late comment letter that was received, I think the day before, maybe. And after consultation with the applicant team, decided to continue that item to February, I think, 7th in order to enable us to respond to that.
Are you done? You're good?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay. In addition, and maybe in closing, I also wanted to provide you with a brief update and let you know that today will be the last Planning Commission meeting that I will be with you. I have taken a position with Placer County. I will be their planning director beginning next week. So just wanted to express my appreciation for the Planning Commission, for I've enjoyed working with all of you and wish you the best. Thank you.
And now that that announcement's out, I'm going to keep talking. I just want to say that I have appreciated working alongside Chris over the last, in different capacities, over the last nine years of his time at the county. He's been a comrade. We've bounced a lot of different ideas off each other, often agree, sometimes disagree, and that's okay. I have appreciated my time with Chris and I know he's done a great job here at Sacramento County.
It's been a pleasure working with you, Chris. Thank you for helping me get up to speed and constantly being full of advice and able to take calls and work through issues. So I really appreciate you.
Thank you very much. It's been great to be able to work with you during my time as well. And I'm sure you'll do great things for Placer County. So yeah, that's their gain, our loss in some regards, but congratulations.
Ditto. Placer County is very lucky.
Thank you. I did, I guess I failed to mention that Jessica Brandt, who's been in the back here today, soaking in the back, she will be taking over the principal planner responsibilities for current planning. And I believe between her and Todd, they will be covering the planning commission duties moving forward.
I heard Commissioner Borja start to speak there. So Zoom commissioners, if you want to say how much you love Chris, now would be the time.
Thank you. And I apologize for interrupting the discussion, but Chris, it's been an honor and a pleasure. Ever since, you know, I started at CPAC many years ago, you've been very flexible, even, you know, providing a presentation at the stairs outside of the multipurpose hall over at Smedberg Middle School or at Sheldon High School. You've been a joy to work with, obviously, all of the staff at the county planning team. But you will be surely missed and hope to still continue working with you. And Placer County is very, very lucky to have you there. So thank you and congratulations to your future endeavors, sir.
Yes, completely agree. Congratulations. We're going to miss you. Thank you for all your guidance and your help here. So good luck in Placer County.
All right. With that, we'll move on to miscellaneous scheduling items.
I don't have anything, but the next meeting is scheduled for January 23rd. And I believe we have a couple items in queue.
Anyone not going to be able to make it on the 23rd? As of now? Other than Chris? I hear Placer County has meetings like twice a week, so sorry about that.
During the day.
All right.
If I may, though, just really quickly, I just do want to announce that if there is a meeting scheduled for February 27th, I would not be in attendance for that. I can make the edits, which is surprising, so.
Looking way out there. I like it. All right. Other public comments?
No, sir. There are no off-agenda public comments.
All right. With that, we'll go ahead and adjourn the Planning Commission at 7:29 PM. Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you and take care, everyone. Stay dry out there.